Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Peralta Community College District for Tuesday, March 28. Can folks hear me in the back? Thank you very much. So next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Reese, would you be, would you be able to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go to 3.3 roll call.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino.
Here.
Trustee Whitrow.
Here.
Trustee Johannes.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Here.
Trustee Napoleon Valeris.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Here.
Trustee Quinlan. I see you, but I cannot hear you, sir.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Delphine Pope.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you very much. Um, next is the affirmation of the statement of cooperation. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership, and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. Full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda, but in summary, we have committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We all therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Okay, moving on to 3.5 report of action taken in closed session. VP Quinlan.
No items to report on.
Okay, thank you very much. And then next is 3.6 approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Resident Delphine Pope, I, I would, I would ask that we, I know that there's a number of individuals that wanted to speak from Pro, and I do have a item under the chancellor's report that VC McKinley will be making, so I'd like to move that before public comment to item three point, I guess it'll be 13, and then move that one down to 3.14. So just one item, just flipping up.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Valeris.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you colleagues. Um, 3.8.
3.7.
It's okay. At 3.7 approval of the minutes. Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Second. Second. Thank you, trustee Reese. Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan.
Oh, I'm so sorry. There's a discussion. Uh, go ahead, VP Quinlan.
So. I recall, I had a correction and was that correction made?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we can proceed with roll call.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Valeris.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving now to 3.8 approval of the minutes from the special board meeting on Friday, March 3rd. Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Second.
Second.
Thank you, VP Quinlan. Roll call.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Valeris.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Abstain since I wasn't here.
Thank you. Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. 3.9 approval of the minutes from the special board meeting on Tuesday, March 7th.
Sure moved.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Johannes. Roll call.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Valeris.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving to 3.10 associated student government reports. We'll start with College of Alameda. Do we have anybody from College of Alameda? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to Berkeley City College. Do we have any student reports? Okay, hearing none. Moving to Merritt College. Um, student trustee Hogan, do you have anything to report back? Okay, and then lastly, Laney. If we don't have anybody, we can go ahead and move on and hear their presentations at the next meeting. Okay, we'll move to 3.11 Peralta Classified Senate Report.
I'd like to report that I heard from Roberto Gonzalez earlier, and there is no report out.
Thank you. And then we will move then to 3.12 District Academic Senate Report. I believe we have Matthew Goldstein here.
You do. Thanks Sasha. Uh, hey folks, I'm Matthew Goldstein. I'm the vice president of the District Academic Senate. I'm here tonight on behalf of Dr. Donald Moore, who couldn't make it, so thanks for having me. I have a few quick notes to share. Um, first of all, DAS remains concerned about the state of college facilities. Trustees recently heard an impassioned plea from Dr. Moore about college facilities, and faculty is still worried about the deteriorating infrastructure on campus um, and the way that it affects faculty's ability to teach and serve students. Construction projects like the new Transportation Technology Center at COA are very exciting, and we welcome them. At the same time, we would love to see similar energy and enthusiasm behind routine maintenance and fixing things in the existing infrastructure. We love the, the, the groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting, but again, we would, we'd love to see attention paid to basic maintenance and routine fixes. Uh, next, uh, we heard at the participatory governance council meeting last week about a district plan to raise minimum requirements on Peralta's reserve funds. A proposed revision to BP 6250 would make the district keep at least two months' worth of operating expenses in the bank. That's an increase over the 10% of the unrestricted fund balance currently called for under the BP. The change would keep the district eligible for certain state emergency funds, which is an understandable and laudable goal. But members of the PGC have made it clear that they expect the district to develop concrete criteria to be included, and perhaps a companion administrative procedure that would establish when such reserves can be tapped. If a pandemic and problematic facilities and plummeting enrollment didn't get us to spend our reserves before, it's hard to not wonder what it would take to get us to spend reserves going forward. Finally, DAS would like to remind the board in the district about faculty primacy and curricular matters. The first area of responsibility listed in the 10 plus one is curriculum, you'll recall, and modality, as its presence in our course outlines of record suggests, is a fundamental part of curriculum. The State Academic Senate recently passed a resolution that reaffirmed this primacy of um, curricular matters and faculty considerations, and uh, the District Academic Senate will endorse that state resolution at its next meeting. So again, modality is a fundamental part of curriculum, and curriculum, of course, belongs to faculty. Um, finally, on a, on a really sad note, I just wanted to um, see if I can do this without, without breaking down here. Cousin Bob Grill, Bob Grill passed away last week. He was a, a great Peralton, a mentor to me, someone who meant a great deal to a lot of faculty members, a lot of community members, and he'll be sorely missed. I think you'll probably hear more from Chancellor Jackson about his passing later, but uh, again, we'll miss Cousin Bob sorely. Thanks for having me. Uh, thanks for your time. Stay safe and dry. Thanks.
Thank you. Then we'll, we did move it around, so we'll go ahead and move to chancellor's report. Go ahead chancellor.
Thank you very much. Um, first of all, um, thanks for many of you that are in the audience. Um, like you, I share your concern regarding our transition from our old um, insurance plan to this new plans, and it hasn't been as smooth as we would like, unfortunately. Um, not because of anything on anyone's part, but just because of processes and procedures of moving from one to the other. So I wanted to have the opportunity to have um, Dr. McKinley, who is the interim vice chancellor for human resources, um, to speak on what our processes are. Um, and I believe he is online, and I think he has just a, a document that he wants to share that would also become part of the public documents um, for this meeting. So with that, um, and then we can entertain, there may be some questions that come from that presentation, which is why I wanted to do that before we had public comment, because I know there's been a number of you that have put in public comment um, to speak on this issue. So um, Vice Chancellor McKinley, if you're ready, um, we can get started.
I am. Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson, and good evening, everyone. Uh, and as you can see, Sasha has put up the draft. We, as we, when we've talked, I've met with the pro leadership several times now, and other members of Pro, and one of the things, of course, that we said we would do would be to maintain the same or better coverage than we've had in the past for our pre uh, 2004 retirees that wanted to have lifetime benefits. And one of those things we said we would do would be to develop a procedure for reimbursing folks for, uh, to make them whole. And that's exactly what you see here. This is the draft procedure. And I'm not going to read, read the entire draft here, but basically it, it runs down how a retiree would file a claim for a, uh, a, some type of procedure or other type of medical issue, prescription or whatever it might be, and that was covered before, but it's not currently covered in the new plan, so that we can make people whole. This outlines how to do that. Just in a kind of a nutshell, uh, folks would have 90 days to file a, a, a claim after they receive service, and of course, they'd have to provide their receipts and bills and any other relevant documents that's to support the claim. We would then have uh, 60 days to adjudicate that claim, and uh, should uh, that it be denied, and I'd like to point out that all claims are, are going to stand on their own. Everything is not, uh, everything's not equal, so we will, each one of those claims will be scrutinized for its applicability to, to be reimbursed in excess of what the current plans offer. Uh, but then, then if uh, uh, there would be an appeal process and that uh, uh, retirees would have 30 days to appeal any denials, and they would come to me, to the, or whomever my successor is, to the vice chancellor of Human Resources for a final uh, review and decision. Uh, then we have, uh, we're going to be able to submit these claims three ways. We'll look at number four here. First of all, they can be mailed in the mail to uh, the benefit office, and there, of course, is the address. Yeah, and with the supporting documents and PDF, all we need are PDF copies of things, or they can be sent via email. There's a new email that's been created, retireeclaims@peralta.edu, and they can be submitted that way. Or number three, there will be a link which is going to be completed, created later this week, where uh, they can submit it on, everything online using an e-form or what is called a fill-up PDF form, and submitting their supporting documents with that. Now you can see that uh, we've already talked about adjudication of the claims and uh, and, and what have you. We'll also be then announcing this by Friday. We'll send this out. I've also sent this, a draft to the pro leadership. As I said, I would do, I'd like to point out that we had promised that we would have this out by the end of March, and, and this is that we've done exactly what we said we would do uh, and with regard to that. So I'd also like to um, uh, let everyone know that our benefit manager, uh, Harazon Odembo, by the way, he's done a really, a good job. This has been a very difficult uh, process. It's been very complicated. Uh, he's done a very good job that uh, unfortunately, he has also some personal issues, and he's going to need to go on family medical leave for the next two months uh, to care for his ailing mother in Kenya. Uh, evidently, there's no one else that she has that could provide that care uh, for her, so he will be, be doing that. We have already reached out to Alliant and others to uh, find a suitable uh, person to fill in for him, benefit manager, uh, and it was an independent contractor, contract in order to fill in that gap. We are repurposing one of our existing staff, uh, um, Adora Tucker, who uh, works in employee relations. We're going to train her to do a lot of these things. We have also um, sent uh, provided pro leadership with uh, two temporary positions that we plan to fill, so possibly there are some retirees that may want to uh, avail themselves of that, of those opportunities. We will be posting those jobs very soon. Uh, one, we can post right away, and other than, we have to actually create a job description, so we're working on that right now. We'll have that in place as soon as we can, so that will be able to augment our ability to provide this um, uh, claim services, and also to provide administrative support for the part-time faculty health plan that's going to be improved uh, in the coming year. I want to reinforce the fact that we have said that we would keep people whole, and we've also said that we would be uh, producing a statement or a definition of what that is. We'll have that by the end of the week. Our lawyers are still working. Our lawyers are still working on that to make sure it's in good shape. And we also will be producing the claim form, which we'll also have by the end of the week for folks to be able to submit these claims. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Colleagues, do we have any questions for Dr. McKinley?
Madam President, I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I realize your staff has been working incredibly hard on this. So kudos to your staff. I'm a little concerned about a couple provisions in 90 days. I'm quite concerned about somebody undergoing a significant health challenge. Might not even get a bill to know what the bill was and what was covered and wasn't within a timeframe. They might be dealing with health challenges that cover more than that 90 days. And so I would encourage you to go back and think about how you would deal with particularly an aging population that isn't quite as fast sometimes and is dealing with those problems, especially given the, anyway, you get where I'm going here. I think that window might be a little bit tight. And then the other thing is, just looking at it, I like, I like that it's clear, et cetera. But I think there needs to be like an ombuds person that's like really clear. Like this is the person who goes, who we go to to help sort things out and not just like send in the piece of paper. So I know your staff has been super helpful and I know you, there, there's the willingness. And as you consider staffing up, I, I think there's just a lot of handholding that needs happening in this process. So I, I look forward to hearing, you know, from our retirees, what they think of this process. And I'm really appreciative that you put this out and that you're working hard on it. And I know that it's a real struggle for some of our retirees. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, hearing none. Chancellor, was there anything else you wanted to include in your report?
I, I did have a couple of more things and this really relates to the upcoming public comment. I know that not everyone has a copy of this and so we will try to with the board's indulgence. If there are some questions, I would ask if, at the end of public comment, if VC McKinley could try to adjust those. I know that's a little different in that in public comment, we're supposed to listen and not interchange. But if we wait to the very end, there may be some repetitive themes that come out that he might be able to address. And I would ask if we could, could do that. And then lastly, as Matthew indicated, we've had our colleagues, a couple of our colleagues that are passed on, that are no longer with us. And one of them is affectionately known as Cousin Bob Grill, Cousin Bob. To many of us, a CIS instructor at College of Alameda for a number of years. And also at Laney College, Leon Dockery, art instructor for a number of years that also passed away within the last 30 days. And so before we close the session, I would ask if Dr. Rudy Besikoff and also Dr. Diana Birami would make a few comments on, on both of those individuals. And if we could close in their honor for their contributions to the, the college and to the district. Thank you.
Go ahead, President Besikoff. You want to do that later today? Okay, great. Thanks.
That way we can get to, to public comment. And again, if the board would indulge us, if Dr. McKinley could address any concerns that come up that weren't quite clear in his presentation, that way we can take note of them. So people know that they're, they're being heard. Health is not something I take lightly, given the issues that I myself have gone through. So just know that there's a sympathetic ear at the district office. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, let's go ahead and move to public comment. Okay, we have Jeff Sincere.
Hello? There we go. Okay. I, um, I want to say first, you know, hello to the board, to, to the chancellor, everybody here, our retirees. I also want to say that, I guess, um, you know, with the chancellor's report coming first, I'm a little disappointed that like, you know, I, I want to make sure that the, the board is actually going to be attentive to the, the wonderful people that we have here tonight that pretty much dedicated most of their lives to Peralta. They're going to say what they feel and then what they've been, what they've been experiencing. They have very important things to bring to the table and I hope that like, you know, nothing that was said so far has forestalled anything that they're going to say. I'm, I'm going to urge you to listen to what they have to say. I guess I could start by saying that, let's see. Well, that's dead. Well, I, I want to talk about the, you know, what, what was just discussed, which was the side letter and like, you know, my part in it. And basically my part in it was, was fairly simple. This is actually something that was agreed upon, a side letter that was agreed upon back in September of 22, September 27th of 22, I believe. And not a lot of action had been happening on it, even though the side letter itself says that it's supposed to be a very clear and simple, simple, like, you know, way to go about things. And, and nothing, nothing has happened since. So, so in February, what I did was in mid-February, I filed agreements, a step to agreements. And basically said one of two things, either there's going to be movement on this and you put it together and you send it to us. Or we actually have PFT, actually we'll write it ourselves and we'll just send you the bill. I met with Vice Chancellor McKinley and he was kind enough to give us a date. It's actually a little bit further than where, further than tonight. He gave us until tax day and I agreed to that. But I'm, I'm curious because what I keep hearing this evening, you know, and as I, as I go, kind of like, you know, definitely off script is that like, you know, what we're talking about here is something that's complicated. And, and the side letter was very clear that this is actually supposed to be something as simple and straightforward to make sure that our retirees and that our folks that are under lifetime healthcare are made whole. You know, and, and I'm hoping that's what it is. I'm hoping that's what's straightforward. I will say that even, even something complicated should be handled fairly quickly in, in a billion that has as much, many millions of dollars of salary as it does. But nonetheless, my hope is that like, you know, this moves quickly and, and fast. And if I have to escalate it to the next step, if PFT has to escalate to the next step, then we will. And, and then we'll just probably end up doing it ourselves and just putting you, putting you guys the bill. I'm here to actually see a copy, a draft of what was written tonight. I haven't received it, but perhaps Jennifer Shinowski has. And in the meantime, have a good night and thank you very much.
Next, we have Thomas Terman.
Take this off if you can hear me. My name is Thomas Terman and I taught at Laney for a little over 30 years in the Architecture Engineering Department under this contract. And it's guaranteed lifetime medical benefits with Blue Cross, even though they've taken some care, not actually mentioned to the cross, but it was actually what we were under at the time. It was the existing insurance. In 2022, you guys decided with your consultant, Alliant, to breach that contract and you have with, as you have with me, by dropping me and the rest of us from our efficient Blue Cross plan. You gave us two months to evaluate and choose replacements from the alternatives you offered us. Those covered in Kaiser probably stayed with that plan. I chose Medicare Advantage with the minimal help of brochures that came. We were told not in writing that the replacement insurance options available to us would be equal or better than the Blue Cross that we had. We were also informally told the district would make it whole, which we just heard just now. In apparently a draft. I'm a licensed architect and a draft means that it's not official yet. As far as I'm concerned, so I hope it becomes official. Now unfortunately, I've had to test this system. My wife was taken into the hospital on the 14th of March with a non-COVID virus infection. According to the altibates, this should have been a three or four day stay in the hospital. It is now over two weeks because the connection between Medicare Advantage, the hospital, finally a so-called skilled nursing facility and the district is never met. Nobody contacts anybody else. So it should have been three, four days. It's now over two weeks. Medical treatment, subsequent move to a skilled, skilled nursing facility has been delayed, postponed because no one could manage the process of establishing our Medicare Advantage coverage. And everybody seems to be afraid of that. I tried to use retirees' first advocacy to convince the EMS and the hospital and the nursing facility that we recovered and the two nice women said, oh, I feel sorry for you and I will call them and we will work it out. That, of course, has not happened. The hospital and the nursing facility were, were suspect, it turns out, of Medicare Advantage because they thought it was connected to Medi-Cal, which everybody apparently hates. And that's because they felt and they have said to me that that's an abused system by indigence and a new term, unhoused, which I'm assuming means homeless. Well.
10 seconds?
10 seconds. Okay. A lot of healthcare efficiency is not your fault. What is your fault is the cavalier mistreatment of your retired employees by removing us from the system that I've worked for 30 years. I'm then therefore asking that you, your alliance should have figured out that we could have two different groups. Your current and former and future employees and us, keep us on that thing. The bond pays for it. So you're saving money and you have a bond to pay for it. It's not an obligation for the future. Thanks. And by the way, I'm going to give you a copy of this because you guys can handle it out. I don't know who to give it to. They just throw it in the air or what? You'll help me. Thank you. Thanks. Okay.
Next, we have Bert Dragon. So Bert is yielding his time to Debbie Weintraub.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Chancellor Jackson and the Board of Trustees and the district personnel who may be here tonight for your service to the district and for taking the time to really listen to me as I speak to you. My name is Deborah Weintraub and I'm the current president of the Peralta Retiree Organization. And I'm here to address retiree healthcare. And one thing I noticed right off the start was I have a piece of paper and said it along the retirees as opposed to a phone, which I know people of a different generation would have. And that just speaks to our efficiency with technology and some of the things that Vice Chancellor McKinley was suggesting that retirees have altogether. But anyway, most of you know why, why we're here, because most of you have received emails and phone calls and from the retirees and people in the human resource part and the benefits office of the district have been to multiple meetings with us as well. So I imagine the sight of our names popping up in your emails brings a look, a knowing look. You know, we also, you know, we've had a reduction in our benefits and we're not happy about the whole process. The transition to the medical plans has not been seamless, as the people from, I think, Alliant suggested. And for some, it has been financially and emotionally very hard, even devastating. Some retirees have lost medical services and others, even current employees, have had to leave vital medications at the pharmacy, walking away because the cost was significantly higher, sometimes hundreds of dollars more than they had been paying prior to January 23. And often, in fact, most of the time, even simple questions that people have are going unanswered. Will my hearing aids or my non-genetic drugs prescribed by my doctor still be covered? Will I be reimbursed? When will I be reimbursed? Basic questions that anyone in a new plan would have. But they've been met with silence or no, just nothing. Why? Pro doesn't think it's for a lack of concern or caring on the part of the people that are being asked, though it can feel that way sometimes. We think it's because there's no reimbursement process currently in place because the benefits office is understaffed and overwhelmed. And the folks at retirees first need direction from the district to answer certain questions. They don't have the authority to tell us what you will or will not cover. I really appreciate the people at the benefits office. They are working really hard. But there are not enough of them. And I'm really sorry to hear about Harzon Odembo's family problems. He's been a real fighter. I mean, he's, he's a really wonderful person and I really appreciate what he's doing. And I'm sorry for his family problems. And I will sorely, I think many of us will miss his presence in the district benefits office. But that is why we initially requested this, this lack of communication, this understaffing, the lack of reimbursement process is why we wanted to be on the agenda tonight. We will need action to be taken now to ensure that money is spent to rectify the problems that we feel were created by the rushed and often chaotic transition. But it's also about your contractual obligation, a legally binding contract that the district has with all employees hired before July 1st, 2004, with lifetime benefits as spelled out in the union contract. It is about upholding those legal obligations. At least two trustees, trustee Gonzalez and trustee Delphine Pope acknowledged the importance of the contractual obligation in October, the meeting on the 27th of October, when you, in 2022, when you accepted the new and union contract. And also Vice Chancellor McKinley has repeatedly spoken to the belief that the district is obligated to make retirees whole as per our contract at multiple public meetings that we have been at with him. And I will say, we are pleased that the district has taken steps in the last few days to begin resolving some of the problems, including sharing a sketch of a posting for two part-time position in the benefits office. I don't know if it's gone anywhere beyond a few of us in the pro leadership and a draft of a letter giving contact information for health plan resources. But still, no reimbursement information. I did receive Dr. McKinley's email. I was out walking a dog. When I came back at five o'clock, I saw that the, the letter, he, the draft he sent, maybe it's my age, but it takes a while to, I mean, reading through all of that and trying to figure out what I'm supposed to do. Took, I, I can't respond to that now because it would take more than the five, 10 minutes I had. But I do want you to know that Pro will be back and we will continue to advocate for the needs and concerns of retirees. Many who have given up, given not up, but given much of their lives to the Peralta Community and College District. And in fact, if you look, many of the retirees are wearing little things that say how many years we've been involved with Peralta. I mean, mine says 24, but that doesn't count the 10 years before when I was a student, when I was a volunteer in the touring program. Is my, okay, I'll be, or any, you know, the 10 years since I retired. It saddens me to say that the treatment of some retirees during this process has been shameful. And it's not a respectful way to treat us. Please do the right thing. Please do the right thing, prioritize the expenditures that need to be needed to reimburse retirees, hire the sorely needed staff, and honor your contractual obligation. Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel DeYoung.
I'm gonna yield my time to Bruce.
Daniel is yielding his time to Bruce. So Bruce Jacobs, then, six minutes.
My name is Bruce Jacobs. I'm the vice president of Pro and a retiree of the district. I'm here because I believe that the implementation of the new benefit system has been so problematic, so full of negative impacts for many individuals, that it requires you to give direction to the administration, take actions to begin to alleviate the problems. These problems include a failure to communicate with retirees who have had questions about diminution of their benefits in anything like a timely way, a benefits office that is understaffed and despite a huge effort by that staff, unable to respond to the many problems and snafus that are the result of the rushed and poorly planned implementation of the changes. And finally, the failure of the district despite promises to arrange for reimbursement for expenses that are not covered by the new arrangements but were by the old. Let me give you some examples. One retiree sent multiple emails to the benefits office at the end of February, starting at the end of February, concerning the diminished coverage for hearing aids and asking if the district was committed to making up the difference. Because he was planning a trip, planning to travel for a multi-month trip, he needed to complete the process of procuring the new hearing aids by the end of April. He never received a single response to his inquiries. The reduction in benefits, by the way, is $2,000. Another example. After months of recognizing that the benefits office was understaffed, the VC sent an email saying the district would like to hire some retirees to help out. At last. The only thing is that there's so little information about the prospective jobs. It's very hard to solicit retirees who might be interested. No information about how many hours, how long, whether it's from home or have to be in the district office, et cetera. And another example. A retired instructor from Merritt College has had to lay out over $140 more than he would have under the trust mark policy for prescriptions and for fees for a provider who does not accept Medicare assignment. He recently was faced with a $1,000 copay for non-genetic drugs with no promise from the district for reimbursement. I can go on and on. My inbox is filled with this stuff. The point is, this is not what we signed up for when we retired. The district and our unions signed contracts which promised us that we would retain the benefits that were in place when we retired. In my case, that was the situation until January 1st of this year. I worked for the district for over 30 years. I was a faculty member, Laney Senate President, DAS Vice President, PFT President, and leader of a year-long planning project after the passage of the first bond issue. In those days, we used to talk about the Peralta family. What I feel now is that the Peralta family has decided to treat the elderly as if we can be discarded. The way to show me that I'm wrong is to immediately take steps to resolve these problems. We must have a reimbursement system that is operational immediately. Vice Chancellor McKinley informed pro leaders at a meeting in February that the district was working with its lawyers to develop such a policy, but that it would not be ready to put in place until July. In the interim, he promised the reimbursements would be handled on a case-by-case basis. But the manager of the benefits office, Arizona, and I can only second what Deborah said about Arizona, tells us he has never received any directive from the VC to set up a temporary reimbursement system. Many retirees cannot lay out money for prescriptions, hearing aids, and non-Medicare assignment providers. Many are hesitating to fill the prescriptions or to make appointments with their doctors. I'm not used to this anymore. We're here tonight, many of us, and I think you can see that there is a small crowd, and I can assure you it would be much larger, but many of our retirees do not drive at night. We're here tonight because we want the board to direct the chancellor and the vice chancellor
Ten seconds?
to make solving the problems retirees are having a priority. We want the benefits office staffed up. We want a policy that says any inquiry about the benefits changes will be responded to within a day or two. And most importantly, we want a reimbursement system that starts immediately, even if it is on a case-by-case basis. District made a promise to us, and it should be honored. Thank you.
Next, we have Joseph Ginnins. Or Ginnins? I apologize if I pronounce that incorrectly.
I think that may be me. My name is Joseph Simmons, and to the chancellor and to the trustees and to the presidents. Again, my name is Joseph Simmons. I'm serving as the Peralta Colleges Foundation Executive Director at this time. I jumped at the chance to come and introduce myself to you. We have a lot of things that we're trying to do to revive the foundation. In addition, we have a couple of events that are getting ready to come up, the golf tournament that will be coming up in May. Also, we're trying to put back together the foundation gala, because we need to get back to raising the foundation monies and things for for our students, because we know that students are really where we need to make sure we're doing our work. So I just want to introduce myself to you and say thank you for this opportunity.
My apologies for mispronouncing that. Next, we have Roger Newman. He was going to yield to Bruce, but Bruce already spoke. Thank you. Next, we have Rick Greenspan.
Hi, I'm Rick Greenspan. I'm the chief negotiator for the PFT. And we're, real quickly, I'll try and make it brief. We are just, the PFT is astounded that the district signed an agreement last September saying that they would come up with some kind of a reimbursement policy, and six months later, it still hasn't come to us. I think that Ron McKinley sent it to Pro, but they didn't send it to the PFT. It's, a two-page policy took six months. And during that six months, it sounds like there were a lot of retirees that were financially burdened by this, 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 the switch in benefits. You know, just, just to start off, I, it's what Nikki Un said about, about the 90 days is a no-brainer. I mean, oftentimes, you don't get a bill from the hospital till six months after the operation. You know, after the anesthesiologist has, has put you to sleep. Six months later, you get the anesthesiology bill, so there's no way that it can, it can happen, you know, within 90 days of the event. But, but I think, you know, on a larger level, that, that, that Peralta has just been putting this off. The fact that PFT had to file a grievance, the fact that, that nothing happened until the, you know, Pro said that they were going to come to the board meeting and protest is, is just, is just indicative of the fact that this was not a high priority. So I would just, you know, I would just strongly urge you to direct the chancellor and to direct Ron McKinley to, that, that this has to get implemented quickly, but it also has to get negotiated. It also has to get talked about, because what he, what he presented tonight, if, if his, if his reading of it, you know, over, over the thing, which we haven't heard yet, but we haven't read it yet, but if his reading of it over the television there is anything like what it's going to be, it's not ready yet. And, and, but he's got to come up with something to do now, and it's, it's got to be modified to take people's issues into account. So I just would, you know, say it, I'm astounded that it's taken this long. Peralta's just got to do better. Thanks very much.
Next, we have Celia Correa. She's yielding to Daniel DeYoung. I'm letting our clerk know. Just FYI, that's why I'm repeating it. Just wanted to let everybody in the audience know.
Good evening. My name is Daniel DeYoung. Am I coming through the PA system? I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I've been listening with great interest. And since I have no notes, I think I'd like to make a few points. I was very struck by the point made by the very first speaker, who said we have two groups of retirees here. For the district to save money going forward, there's a whole issue of those who have yet to retire, who have not yet tapped the programs that we're now dealing with, which represent a diminution, great diminution of our benefits. Much smaller group, those of us who have already retired and who have been benefiting, well, benefiting from the contractual obligation was there to continue with benefits as they were given us on the day of retirement. And I'd like to second my agreement with the very first speaker. The solution here for me is to revert for this relatively small group of people, but this is impacting our lives and shortening them, that we go back to our prior medical, respective medical coverages. I also agree with some of the speakers that have pointed out that these solutions, like, what's here, 60 days? You need to put in within 60 days? It's not coming out till the end of next week. We had some appointments January 2nd. The time has passed. How is this addressed? So I think that's what I had to say, but I think the solution here, I sense a total stonewalling. I'd also like to see written down how much money is the district spending on Alliant, on these lawyers that are helping you figure out what to do, and on these positions, which would be totally unnecessary if you just revert to our older, with the system that we had when we retired. Thank you.
Madam President, that's all we have for in-person public comments. I am now going to go out to the Zoom attendees and ask if anybody has a comment that they would like to make that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hand. Madam President, we have no public comments in Zoom. Okay, thank you all very much. We will now move to presentations, 4.1, presentation of the 2022-2025 Student Equity Plan for Berkeley City College, COA, Laney, and Merritt.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dr. Vasco Salas, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, trustees, chancellor, and colleagues. I'm very excited to be here with you tonight to, to share our 2019 to 2025 student equity plans and updates. As you know, per Title V, every three years, the colleges share their equity plans and their equity updates with the board. And I know this is a special time for you to hear details about the data and also about the, the really strategic work that's being done at the colleges to mitigate and close achievement and access gaps for our students. So I'd like to share with, I'm not sure if they're already up there, but the vice presidents of student services and/or their designees will be presenting for the colleges. Are they, I can't see the mic.
Hi there, Tina, can you see?
We have Dr. Mildred Lewis, who is here to make the first presentation. Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. Sasha, can you share the PowerPoint?
Good evening, President Delphine Polk, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, college presidents, community members, and colleagues. Move on to slide one, please. I have the pleasure of sharing with you tonight the Student Equity Plan highlights for College of Alameda. The Student Equity Plan was a collective and collaborative effort that brought together faculty, classified professionals, administrators, and students. During the fall semester, College of Alameda began with the, with the data review and analysis in how well our, how well we are serving our students while focusing on disproportionate impact students, student groups for continuous improvement. Some of the areas for improvement that we're working on are female students, particularly with successful enrollment in the first year, Black African-American students persisting from one semester to the next, Black African-American students and Latinx Hispanic students completing both transfer-level math and English. Foster youth students were working to help them transfer to four-year institutions. And finally, male students completing college. Slide two, please. College of Alameda's equity goals and activity success are a result of academic excellence for all, for all of our students with a lens on our disproportionately impacted students. Our educational master plan, which focuses on equitable access and student success for all students, as well as improving social and economic mobility of our community, most especially our underserved student groups. Some of our highlights include Tasty Tuesdays, bringing students on campus for delicious cooked food, promoting academic program engagement when students arrive and addressing, addressing their basic needs. College of Alameda continues our online platform and instruction and student services and our in-person instruction and student services for a balanced student engagement approach. We relaunched the Umoja Learning Community with in-person services for Black and African-American students and enhancing relationships with our P16 school district partners and adult schools. President Bajrami recently welcomed Alameda Unified School District and regional partners for an in-person breakfast and presentation. We're also continuing with, continuing with mobile COA by increasing proactive contact and support of successful enrollment. Slide three, please. College of Alameda's new goals and activities to mitigate and address opportunity gaps involve interrupting silos where, where instruction and student services work in synergy as a community of practice for equity and student onboarding 2.0. Some of the goals include our community of practice, which are developing scalable and specific in-class strategies that support the retention of Black or African-American and Latinx students, and developing an evaluation tools to track and assess course-level data to determine effectiveness of retention strategies. And then with student onboarding 2.0, CEA Committee will, is collaborating with student services to regularly and regularly research best practices and also collaborate with instructional faculty as well. and regularly research best practices and also collaborate with instructional faculty as well. This concludes my report for College of Alameda.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Dr. Martin Demotofloris. I'm the Dean of Counseling and Student Equity Change Program, Berkeley City College. What you're seeing here was actually a slide deck that had some things that would move in on it at one at a time. And I'm just going to talk to you through some of the data. One of the things we wanted to propose here was that, um, a snapshot into how our planning was informed, both in the earlier Student Equity Plan in terms of going into our next Student Equity Change Plan. And one of the big, some of the four metrics that really informed it were around what does our demographic trend look like over the last several years? And how we've been able to maintain both our black student enrollment, increasing our Latino, Latina, Latinx student enrollment, and also our AAPI population. Going forward, we also looked at, well, what are our rates around persistence for our first-time students? As the giving us a guidance in terms of how are we meeting milestones, what are our interventions? And how are we really taking some action to to mitigate those? And then the other part was when we started thinking about, so if a student completes with us, what type of jobs and degrees and what type of fields those enter in? And how does that connect to wage? And if you see in that table on the bottom third-hand corner, you really start seeing a connection between where students are completing degrees and how those equate to wage-earning fields. Uh, the column on the left, um, is circled with a box, and those are high, will be considered high-wage earning fields. Whereas the one on the right, our cards consider low-wage earning fields. And if you take a look, you'll see that our students of color, particularly disproportionately impacted, make up a significant proportion of those. So the conversation really then becomes, how are we having these interventions that around degrees and how those connect to careers early on? And that gets to when we think about retention and completion in courses. So we know when students don't complete a course with a senior better, does often change what they feel is there with their educational journey is in. So the next slide, please. And so what this led to was us really thinking about in our first Equity Plan about a lot of different activities. And this was some of the critique that came from the chancellor's office was that colleges and dishes really stepped into this thinking about like, what can we do? And almost like a large approach to address all these different things. And some of the learning from that was that if we're truly committed to an equity approach, that doesn't mean that we try to throw as much as we can at everything that we can try to address. It really means we need to get focused. And so what we learned in our in our initial equity plan was that where we were really good as was supporting dual enrollment, and particularly when it came to our students of color, um, our black and Latino students, we increased the opportunities for them to participate in college courses as it rose from eighth to ninth grade. We increased the number of dual enrollment students who are participating in our college, um, almost by a hundred percent. In addition, a lot of the students, when you look at our local Berkeley High School, were all Latino and black. And so that got to say something about the type of work that we're doing and intentionality behind it. And then some of the other highlights around here that I would just acknowledge for what that we took advantage of our equity plan is that we were able to secure our first HSI grant. Uh, we expanded, um, our Moja Scholars Program from just a small defined cohort to a large comprehensive program where any student can come in and join. And then the additional part was that we saw that for API population, one of the things they kept on saying is like, yeah, I make up a large population of your college, but you still don't see me. And so, uh, through our API lead program, we started having a really strong conversation like how we see you, how we name you and how we want to acknowledge how you want to be seen as well. This led into slide, the next slide, please. So, oh, this is not the right one. This is different. Okay, we'll go with it. Um. One of the things that became really clear to us in our in our in our current Student Equity Change Plan was that, um, our black students were not experiencing success. Um, across all the metrics that we saw, they were either plateaued. The only where we did really well with them was around was around, um, their enrollment, right? Um, if you know, the city of Berkeley, City of Berkeley has a a black resident population of about eight percent in the city and Berkeley College, Berkeley City College, our student black population is about sixteen percent. So we're doing some things there to attract our black students, but the part becomes the retention and completion part. And so then in our next Student Equity Change Plan that goes to twenty twenty-five, we, um, are solely focusing on black student success. We're doing this through, um, a black student success program. Uh, we're going to expand to an A two-man charter program. And then we're also going to continue to have like an intervention program that ensures that every black student receives at least one call during the semester by a person that says, I see you. How can I help you? And based on what I can see, let me direct you to some services. In terms of like the activities that go behind that, we're planning to hire a black student success program manager. Um, we continue to expand the Moja Scholars Program, not just from a cohort, but to a college-wide program. Um, and then the other part is around investing in professional learning for our faculty and staff around what does it mean to be culturally fluent when dealing with black students and creating intervention? And the last column that you see there is really around our outcomes. Um, because when we think about reaching equity and particularly justice for black students, it's not just about like, did we get to a goal? It's really about calling ourselves accountable for the behaviors that get students to complete. And so for the next three years, you'll see BCC really focusing on black student success. Thank you for the time.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Marlon Hall. I'm the Vice President of Student Services at Laney College. Basically, I'm going to discuss, want to be brief, because we only have three slides about our Student Equity Plan at Laney College. First of all, I'll just say is being the flagship institution of of the of the Peralta Community College District, we seek to serve our students with this plan, this equity plan that focuses on our disproportionately impacted students. And through this, we want to reduce the equity gap in achievement, help our students achieve their educational goals and find ways to ensure their success of our diverse and disproportionately impacted students. But most of all, we want to help our students reach their academic and career potential. So the first slide, which has a lot of data, and I don't think I need to explain everything to you, but it focuses on the five, uh, metrics, access, retention, transfer, English and math, and also completion. So it mentions each group, and our focus is on African-American, black students, foster youth students and Latinx students. So in this data, like I said, it's within the, uh, metrics of the CCCO metrics. Next slide, please. Okay, our highlights from our previous plan of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty states about twelve to fifteen bullets of what things that we were successful at Laney, creating areas of interest with our guided pathways, our welcome center and admissions and records collaborated to create I enroll steps to ensure students are aware of each step, step in the enrollment process. Student Life compiled resources and created a campus and community resource guide to address student basic needs, which are very important. We also created onboarding videos to support students in the enrollment process. And also, we've the I enroll at Laney one-page widget steps, multilingual and various languages for non-credit as well as regular students and concurrently, especially admit students. And also, we've increased remote counseling enrollment services, supporting student onboarding and problem solving and remote services delivered via Zoom phone, Zoom phone, live chat or Conex Ed. And also, we've developed Fall is Free for the Fall of twenty twenty-two, and Spring is Free for this Spring of twenty twenty-three. And through that, we've offered free Chromebooks and hotspots. We transitioned from online counseling and provided in-person and virtual appointments. We've outreach to students on dismissal and probation status for support and services. We've outreach into the community to aid the transition of our disproportionately impacted students to college and extended technology advising to instructors in their classrooms to support students. And finally, we've offered counseling and mental health services in person and virtually. Next slide, please. So on our new plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty-five, we're braiding of resources to support our our disproportionately impacted students. We developed a report-out process on equity plan process. We're revamping orientation, actually, the 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 Strategic Enrollment Committee, manage, I'm sorry, the SCM Committee is putting together a a orientation a committee within the committee to revamp our orientation, and we know the district is also talking about the same thing. Also, we we plan to develop data dashboards for our populations, expand basic needs offering to support students and offering in-person tutoring and support. And our three main groups for our Latinx students, our black African-American students and our foster youth students for under our Af- uh, Latinx students, we advocate for full-time pointe English faculty, dedicated space on campus, which is Eagle Village, which is a nice place. Expansion of our mental health services to support Latinx students and their family, and also we're applying as a HSI institution. For our black African-American students, we created high school to college pipeline, African-American, black students orientation, a summer bridge program, embedded tutoring, alumni mentorship programs and auto-class experiences such as an HBCU tour, which our group of students just left the other day, conferences and study abroad. And finally, for our foster youth, we advocating for full-time staff orientation specifically for foster youth, application process specifically for foster youth, and also dedicated physical space on campus for our foster youth. Thank you for your time and go Laney.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, Board President Delphine Polk, members of the Board of Trustees, presidents, colleagues and Peralta community. Merritt College, Merritt College's Equity Plan is informed by data that has been thoughtfully compiled by our Director of Research, Nathan Pelgrin, to illustrate stark differences in the academic progress of some of our students. The disproportionately impacted groups that are focused on in our Student Equity Plan are black African-American students, Latinx students, and the third group that is composed of black African-American males and Latinx males. We felt that that last group was tremendously important to highlight. I would like to take a moment to walk you through our slides. The first slides to your left show that between two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, there was an increase in the number of in the percent, or there was an increase in the annual headcount enrollment for females, black females of three point seven percent, and then a decrease of three point two percent of black males. In two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty, compared to the previous year, we saw a significant change. We saw a decrease of eleven point five percent for black males, I mean, black females, and six point one percent decrease for black males. And then the following year, we see that decrease becoming even more significant. And then in twenty twenty-one, less so, with a decrease of four point nine percent for black American females and two point eight percent for black males. What we see below that chart is the same data for our Latinx students. And we see an increase in that first year, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, over the previous year. And then we see again declines pretty significantly in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year. And then again, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year. If you look to your right, you will see a different set of of data in that this is looking at the completion of both transfer level math and English in the first year over a three-year period. So this is an average over three years. And what we see is that of all other students, twenty point nine percent completed both their transfer level math and English in the first year, which isn't a very big percentage, but we see that percentage declining as we go to our other groups. Nineteen point one percent for Latinx students and only fifteen point seven percent for black African-American students in terms of the, you know, the that out of a hundred percent, only fifteen point seven percent um, were successful in completing both transfer level and math and English courses in their first year. These are compelling statistics. If you look below that chart, um, you will see that um, there are again two sets of of data, and you see twenty-nine percent of all of those who of all of those students who identified having a degree or certificate as a goal, twenty-nine percent of them were Latinx, twenty-four percent of them were African-American, and forty-seven percent were from other groups. Of those who actually were awarded a degree or certificate, twenty-six percent of those were Latinx, twenty-seven percent of those were black or African-American, and forty-seven percent came from all other groups. And then we see similar statistics for transfer, but even more compelling in that twenty-nine percent of those who identified transfer as a goal were Latinx, twenty-four percent were black African-American, and forty-eight percent came from other groups. Of those who actually achieved transfer, twenty-two percent were Latinx, eighteen percent were African-American, and sixty percent came from other groups. So we see some pretty significant disparities here. Um, most compelling of these, uh, statistics you will find in the bottom chart or the middle chart, where you'll see that there is a significant dip in in twenty twenty-one in persistence among all other groups. And you see again with Latinx students, which is highlighted in gray, a dip, but there's a bit of a recovery. What's really troubling here is you see for African-American and black students, there is a steady decline. And so these are things that we are very, um, intent upon addressing and reversing. Next slide, please. So some of the plans that we have, uh, in in terms of addressing or some of the successes that we've experienced in terms of these um, these these data sets include that we've increased our dual enrollment. Uh, we are, we have been awarded an HSI grant. Uh, we have developed an online equity rubric training for faculty. We have hired a counselor to specifically serve Latinx students. We've had successful implementation of AB seven oh five and even won awards for our success in that regard. Uh, we have developed professional development to ensure excellent comfort, excellent customer service in student services area, and we have had an increase in mental health services made available. There has been the development of a merit care team. This is a collaboration between counseling and our mental health specialists at the college that has been very successful in assisting those that are most vulnerable among our student population. There's also been a basic needs task force formed, and we have engaged in a very uh, collaborative team approach to outreach and enrollment that brings together student services and, um, instruction. There's been an increase in faculty involvement in DEI efforts. Next slide, next slide, please. Some of the highlights of our plans and goals that we, um, have in store have been developed in a number of venues. This discussion on equity is taking place not only in the Equity Committee, it's taking place in our Institutional Effectiveness Committee, it's taking place in Faculty Senate, it's taking place in our most recently, um, our Flex Day, we discussed our Ed Master Plan, because equity is interwoven throughout everything that we do. So one of the goals that we have is institutional tracking of all instruction-led equity initiatives. We don't want to just say we're going to do something. We want to track our progress and hold ourselves accountable. Uh, we want to hire a counselor focused on African-American student success and continue to build diversity among faculty and staff by being very deliberate deliberate in our hiring practices and conscious of the fact that representation matters. Uh, we engage in regular race-conscious professional development for faculty and staff in key areas, including how to best support and work with African-American, Latinx and African-American males. We are assessing every student's basic needs during their first semester, and we are increasing collaboration with community partners who are eager to work with us to address some of the disparities that I highlighted earlier. The focus of our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Planning Summit on disproportionately impacted student persistence and success was a great, uh, was a great highlight for all of us, and it enabled us to have some really rich discussions around our future planning. We've also been engaged in identifying grants to help with funding resources and the development of services for DI students. Um, at Merritt, we are very, very proud of the direction that equity is taking. Our equity commitment is believing that it is our obligation to our students to confront societal racism and discrimination. We commit to the intentional and relentless application of equity and social justice as we cultivate academic excellence, self-determination. as we cultivate academic excellence, self-determination, and informed civic engagement. I'd like to leave with you a moment in time that I experienced a few weeks ago. One of our longtime custodians, Vince Ely, noticed a young Black woman on our campus sitting outside with her head down. He said, "Young lady, hold your head up high. It's gonna be alright. It's going to get better." She was amazed that somebody was even watching her. So she lifted herself and she smiled, and she said, "You know, you're right." She smiled brightly and was clearly encouraged by his caring words. It's an all-hands-on-deck approach at Merit, and we are excited about realizing our goals to bridge gaps and to support the success of all of our students. Thank you. This concludes my report from Merit College. Thank you all very much for your presentations. Colleagues, do we have any questions or comments? BP Quinlan, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for the reports. The question I have is, we, we talk a lot about the swirl at our community colleges and from the, from the standpoint of equity, seeing where people are leaving or who's leaving at what point, who's not completing at what point. It seems like that's gonna be pretty hard to figure out. You know, if somebody's going to Merit and Laney and Alameda, at what point do they leave or what causes them to leave? So one of the things I'm concerned about in the, the data presented of, of who's leaving, who's being successful, we have kind of four different formats or four different questions that are answered. And I'm curious why, in the summary of what, how we're going forward, the four colleges have pretty much the same format, and it's easy to follow from college to college. But from the data we have about the current success, it's, you can't follow from college to college because four different, seems like four different sets of questions are being asked. And that makes it really confusing for me at least to look at this and figure out where are the common points, what is, you know, does the question I'm asking make any sense or?
Just be honest? Yeah, I do understand. Can you, I do understand your question. I think this is more so enrollment for the degree program or certificate. And so in that case, they would only be attached to one college versus attached to the district based on how many courses they take, alright, is it?
Trustees, can I chime in as that?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Am I be able to help? So, so what you're hearing, when you're hearing the data points and in the slides and the first slide for the different colleges, the data points are basically set or the data is the, the categories are set by the Chancellor's Office, right? They're really prescribed, we're looking at certain elements, and we're looking at them all across the same. So, so you're not gonna see swirl in that, and, and it is, it is different than what, like if we were gonna do a research project on our campuses and really do, you know, a DIA dive perhaps, and look at data and then come up with what, what sort of, you know, develops as a result of the data and then how, what kind we might wanna do to implement or to move the, move things forward for greater success. It's a different approach. And so I'm partly not sure if you're asking about the slides or if you're asking about the NOVA submissions that are in your packets, because those are the really prescribed pieces also that you're seeing. So I'm not sure if I helped at all.
So I, I was just asking about the data that was presented tonight in the, that it seems confusing to me that different questions are being asked at each college.
So the data, so, so the slide presentation tonight was each college had, had the same prompt, and they answered it in their, in the ways that they did that came out of their equity plans. And so what they were to do was to come up with the data that obviously was for the current plan, talk about that, talk about, highlight, you know, their successes from the 2019 to 2022 plan, and then also what they were looking forward to be working on in the 2022, 25 plan. I think what gets tricky sometimes is there's so many different elements. Like you see in the NOVA report, there's so many different elements that we're tracking and that we're providing disproportionately impacted data on in the, in the actual submissions. What gets pulled out and highlighted in an executive summary or in a presentation like this is more of, of what sort of came up as, as that group for that college. So it's not gonna necessarily look like apples to apples, if that makes sense.
It makes sense to me, and maybe I'll jump in to, to try to help what I think I hear you saying. If you look at the presentation that was done by Laney, those indicators are the indicators that we have to look at across each of the colleges. Access, retention, looking at English and math, looking at completion and looking at transfer. How each of the colleges look at those particular elements is different based upon the demographics of that college. So even though they didn't present it the way that Laney did, if you look at the slide that Laney provided, that is the template and the lens in which each of the colleges have to look, but the data is gonna be different for that college. And even though they didn't address it in terms of those, you know, elements that are part of the equity plan, they all addressed it based upon the populations that they feel have been disproportionately impacted. If that helps a little bit. Or did I make, like I said, did I muck it up even more than it was before? But those indicators are across all of the colleges. They just didn't put them in a, the same way that they were presented by Merit because they're looking at it from the lens of the college. And what has been successful for that college or which has not been successful? And what are the intervention steps is that college going to take to address those issues?
So I had one other question, and I talked to Dr. Vaskins Ellis about this ahead of time. And we had a conversation here several months ago about it. I think at the time, we had a figure of something like 61% of our students are female and 39% are, are male. And it's, I, I'm not sure if it's an equity question, but I mean, enrollment is a big problem, and it seems to me that we have to figure out a way to address that question. It's happening across the country, it's happening at all colleges, but nobody has the answers. And one of the things we talked to Dr. Vas, that I talked to Dr. Vaskins Ellis about, we used to be out in the community recruiting a lot more. I know COVID's probably cut down on that, but I think it's something we need to be doing. I, to me, I can imagine, you know, running in enrollment clinics in the churches and having people go out on Saturdays and people bring people into the, into the community, the, the organizations in the community, that we need to be going out to the community to, to talk to people as opposed to waiting for them to come to us. And I know there's some really great programs, especially, I can't remember her name. I think Maria, somebody at, Maria Spencer at, at Merit. I see every week she's out at some different organization recruiting people, which I think is great, but is an overall strategy to address some of our enrollment issues and bring more, you know, larger populations. And the other thing that really confuses me is when it, when it looks at the number of people that applied versus the number of people that enrolled. At Laney, that, I think that's the only one where they really address that is, you know, like the percentage that's 20% of the people are actually enrolling. And have we, do we have any idea why that is such a low percentage?
We have some ideas. There was a data integrity report that was started in 2021 or the end of 2020 and carried over it, that was provided to the board. And it's a data integrity report, and it talks about our reporting. So part of it is that we haven't been reporting and capturing the right data to be able to apply to the formula and the metricsies that the state is using to evaluate our, our funding and our resource allocation on. That's one issue. So it's not one, one thing, that's one. Another one is our outreach, that's another. The one where, another one was we weren't capturing the data and presenting it to the board. That was something that was being done by marketing, and we've had a couple of reports on that to show the significance of the hits on the webpage. Thanks to Erin Harbor, who's sitting right in front of you, and has been working with our webpage and launched our new webpage so that it's accessible not only on a laptop or on a computer, but also on your phone. Because we had issues with that, that, so we've addressed that. And then the other one is just what you've been saying. It, students are slow to start coming back to campus. That, we've tried to address that with our dual enrollment. We've had a CTE summit, looking at how we can leverage our grants to be able to address those gaps that we have in our general fund one. So there's a lot of things that we're doing. We have an enrollment academy, we started last year. It'll be coming up later on in April, where we will be presenting information to the board on those numbers. It's, it's a special meeting, so it's not a, you know, bringing action to the board or anything. It's sort of like a retreat that is focusing on enrollment, so you understand where we are on those. But this is like, Dr. Vaskins Ellis said, this is a 30,000-foot level that each college is looking on, but we're gonna delve, delve in deeper when we have our enrollment academy. So that may be able to answer some of your questions because it'll be a give and take with the college presidents, with myself. We'll have the vice presidents here. So if a question comes up, then we'll have the subject matter experts that can try to, try to provide some clarity, because you're right, it, it's a lot of different things. It's, it's not just one. And so we're trying to take a multi-pronged approach to addressing the issue, and, and we've been successful this last year. All of the colleges, when we gave the update in January, there was a double-digit increase in enrollment. But it's not the be-all, end-all, because just to get the students in, we want them to transfer, we want them to get a certificate, we want them to persist from year to year. And those are the things, and, and have access, ability to get in and get out, get a job, or whatever their career goals are. And that's what the equity plan is looking at.
Right, I, I understand. I mean, part of it is, obviously, COVID had a big impact on all this data. You know, this ship is sinking, the first thing you wanna do is find your life preserver. And that's kind of what happened, I think, with a lot of our students is their life preserver was, was, you know, in their home or in their community. And, and rightly so, people were taking care of parents or kids or relatives. And so I, I just think that we, you know, we need to recognize that. But the data is, is really critical that we're, that you developed here. And how we move forward on that, I think, is also, we, I guess we, we need to do better, right? Everybody agrees on that.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, so on the last point, on the 20% with the enrollment versus the applications. So when you're looking at your equity plans, you're looking at years back, right? You're not looking at this year or even last year in the data. But one of the things that we found was we have a great partnership with OUSD, and they have their seniors or we're having their seniors all apply through CCC, apply for Peralta. So there was one year, I don't remember which year right now, there was about 11,000, you know, applications that weren't really true applications because of that. So, so some of it is, as the Chancellor said, you know, reporting the data to the board to share it with you all. And some of it is what is our real data, right? And trying to go through, it's great that they have a process and that they're sharing that, you know, and it's a skill-building piece for the seniors in OUSD. And it, it skews our data as far as enrollments versus applied on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Trustee Whitro.
To what degree did the statistics change in all four colleges when there is more of a focus on career awareness?
The equity plans didn't, didn't focus on career awareness versus the data changes in either access or success. But I think that's a good thing to look at, and, you know, we talk about it a lot over district-wide and career education committee. And I've been working with the career deans, and we're looking at doing the open houses as well as the summer institutes to increase our awareness specifically for our high school students. But we also, you know, as Trustee Quinlan was saying, need to sort of reach out to the community and see how to boost our enrollments for career and with our adults as well.
Colleagues, do we have any other questions or comments?
President Delpin Polk.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I really wanna thank many, many people who are working on this. It's like we separate out, this is an equity report, but I know that at kind of every level of the institution, this is kind of what we do. And so having a summary of the data and kind of a plan, I think is really helpful. I'd just like to emphasize one part that I think often doesn't get that much attention, and that is contextualizing the inequities that we experience in our institutions within the context of the inequities of the overall society. And those are things that, as an institution, we can't directly affect so much in what we do, except to the extent that we help the students and staff and faculty be civically competent. And I, and I think that the other value of doing that is that it treats the student as an empowered agent of change. So thinking about, you know, I, I think Trustee Withrow's question about jobs was really important. It's like you have a job, you become an agent of, of kind of your own destiny in that way. It just feels really good. But I think that's also true when you figure out how to get your community to vote, when you figure out how to organize people to fight for public policy that makes sense. And so as we think about equity, if we can also be thinking about, how do we transform the entire society? And our best leverage point for that is gonna be our community, our students. If we can engage them in the process of thinking broadly about racism in the society and other forms of social and environmental injustice, I think it works better. And so, look, you all are in charge of it, I'm not doing operations on this, in this district. But I really do think that, that political and civic empowerment has to be at the core of how we think about equity work. So I'll just put that out there from a policy perspective, and I'll trust that you all will figure it out as well as you can figure it out. And again, from the bottom of my heart, and, and there are so many people who care about this in this district. And we haven't figured it out. Nobody's figured it out. We're trying, I look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your work. You're getting claps from up the, on the dice. Thank you.
I, I just have one question, I guess, from the people that put this data together and worked on it, and then the presidents. I guess my question is, what can we do better as a board to support you?
Dr. Bajami.
To make a comment after, Trustee Juan Gonzalez, what can we do? Because we just came, COA had a member of seven-member team participate in the Guided Pathways Conference. And I was really mesmerized what we can do tying to Trustee Withrow's question. Some of the colleges have done a really good job partnering with businesses and industry. And in addition to preparing, you know, empowering civic engagement and changing policy, what these colleges had done is look at that college and career readiness and completion and partnering with industry to create livable wages, jobs for the students. And that was really, for me, this is what I took away from there, guiding. You know, I do agree with Trustee Juan Gonzalez. We got to combine together the equity plan with guided pathways, with everything that we do, not only focusing on transfer, but focusing on livable waging and career readiness and partnering with industry to generate those jobs and look even further about what are some of our programs? What changes do we need to lead on those jobs? So this is what we took away at COA, and we'll work better on that to tie with livable wages preparations. And as a trustee, you know, probably leveraging all the resources we have to partner. Leveraging all the resources we have to partner with not only community members, but also the industry partners and and engaging a good partnership.
If I may, in response to your question, I I think, and this touches a little bit on trustee Withrow's question. At Laney, at the beginning of the pandemic, actually Laney received an award from the Campaign for College Opportunity. For the increase in transfer degrees among African-American students. Then, of course, you know, pandemic and everything and our data, what we've seen now is. Actually, an increase in the numbers of certificates attained, that that's something that's been out there and we've seen that. And on top of that, just kind of coming into our state of affairs now. A lot of our career ed sections are full. I mean, culinary arts comes to mind that and machine, machine technology, they're full now. That's that's really where that's at. So what can the board do? Please, by all means, as you're making contacts and communicate them, please communicate them to the chancellor. So that we can reach out and make those contacts with industry partners, with those that want to assist with employment, employment attainment. And things like that, because I think along with this time when we're seeing students responding to. Offers to assist with basic needs, there's also that cry for help for career needs.
Go ahead, Vipipan.
Sorry. Just a point of information. I don't know how many people have looked at our budget. In terms of our performance in the student-centered funding formula areas. So right now, the SCIF formula says that transfer degrees get four times as many funding points as earning a living wage. So despite that fact, in our district. And I'm I'm certainly a outright advocate, front, center advocate for career education. That's my background. In our district, despite that four to one ratio, our biggest SCIF earner is the living wage. You know, that's that's where we get most of our funding from and SCIF is is the living wage metric. And to me, that's that's incredible. And I think one thing that we need to do as we go through is kind of address that difference in the the point totals. Because certainly earning a living wage, and I think in the Bay Area right now, that's sixty-three thousand dollars a year. That that is, you know, for for many of our students, that certainly is important, is earning a transfer degree that has, well, I don't want to go there. Never mind.
Thank you, Vipipan. Anything else, colleagues? Okay, thank you very much again. Go ahead, please, go ahead.
I was just going to add that if the board could support the the efficient processing. Of hires and the efficient processing of resources when we call upon you. In terms of moving forward the agenda of of equity, that would be tremendously helpful helpful. And I agree with you, seventy percent of our FTS is from CE. So. You're absolutely right in terms of the importance of that and how we should, you know, try and and honor that more. So, thank you.
Okay. Chancellor, do you have something you wanted to add or do we, should we go on to the next presentation?
No, I wish we have a guest here is going to speak on the next presentation.
Okay, four point two, presentation of the Northern Alameda Adult Education Collective.
And it's going to be Shamila Johnson is going to be the presenter and she's the executive director. Of the Northern Alameda Adult Education Collective and also we provide copies. Thank you very much. And the board should have a copy of their three-year plan. So Shamila, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Delphin Polk, Vice President Quinlan, trustees, members of the board. We want to thank Chancellor Jackson, President Besikov. And Dr. Droker for inviting us to speak tonight about the Northern Alameda Adult Education Collective. My name is Shamila. I'm the executive director.
And my name is Anne Gonzalez, manager of special projects.
So we have a presentation. I don't know if it's Sasha, are you going to share? Thank you so much. Next slide. So we will cover a high-level overview of the consortium, including membership, structure, allocation, programming, and enrollment. We've highlighted some important partnerships we are actively involved with and the role of our transition liaisons. Which those positions are held at each of our colleges. Lastly, we want to share out some needs of the consortium that we have from the colleges and the college district. As we work to advance the collective to serve many more students within our community. Next slide. To provide context for those of you that are new to the adult ed world. I will briefly explain at a high level the California Adult Education Program, which is also known as CAPE. Formerly known as Adult Education Block Grant or AEBG. The twenty thirteen fourteen state budget appropriated twenty-five million dollars to the California Community College Chancellor's Office. To allocate funding for two-year planning and implementation grants. The funds were provided to eligible consortia for the purpose of developing regional plans for adult education. The work group developed the required legislative report based on the plan submitted by seventy-one consortia throughout the state. Our consortium consists of four adult schools, one adult charter, and the four Peralta Community Colleges. Next slide. Due to CAPE funding, there are seven approved program types that can be offered using CAPE funds. Two programs covered under CAPE that are not included at the colleges are the first one. Which covers high school diploma or high school equivalency certificates. And then programs in family literacy. This shows how much alignment there is with programming in both the adult schools and the community colleges. Because the other five programs are covered by both the community colleges and the adult schools. Next slide. We are one of three consortia in Alameda County. In addition to ours, there's Mid-Alameda County, which covers Chabot, Las Bacitas. And South County, which covers Aloney. Our organizational structure is made up of the executive cabinet, which includes the superintendents or their designees for the K-12s. As well as the presidents or designees from the colleges and the associate vice chancellor of academic affairs from the college district. The cabinet meets six times per academic year. And each member has one vote. The cabinet is our only Brown Active Committee. The working group and my position report directly to the cabinet. And recommendations from the working group must be vetted and approved at the cabinet level. The transition team consists of five transition liaisons, one for each college and then one for Oakland Adult. Each TL reports to a dean or associate dean at the colleges, but the committee actually reports to our working group. The manager of special projects reports to the executive director and she organizes. And facilitates our bridges pathway and our data task force groups. Maintains our website, interfaces with our transitions team and responds to potential and students and potential student inquiries. As the executive director, I manage the daily operations of the consortium. Ensure that we meet our state reporting requirements, facilitate our executive cabinet and our working group. Manage our CAPE funding process. And we both seek community-based organizations and industry partners to collaborate with. All while ensuring that all member interests are heard and considered in this meaningful cross-collaborative work. Next slide. Due to the massive funding cuts to adult education back in two thousand eight. The CAPE funding is the primary operational dollars for our adult school members. So of the total annual allocation, the adult schools receive approximately eighty-four eighty-four percent of the total allocation. The Peralta District is the fiscal agent of these funds. And the colleges use the bulk of their annual allocation to fund that transition liaison position, salary and benefits. With little excess to use on varying projects. Next slide. The next two slides are specific to our consortium and although these are demographic estimates from CAPE. Of our consortium regional footprint, it certainly represents the college district as our population is the same. Next slide. Our goal is to improve alignment with the colleges of our CAPE program areas such as ESOL, basic skills and career education. Next slide. Based on our census data, the non-credit enrollments at the Peralta Colleges from the twenty-one twenty-two academic year. The total is nearly twenty-four hundred adults. The non-credit apportionment rate is currently over forty-four hundred dollars. And while we are not experts on the FTS calculation. The idea is that the adult school pipeline could be a solid generator for the college of FTS. We are all, we all experienced challenges during COVID and now post-pandemic, our enrollment numbers are steadily increasing. Which is shown in that last two columns. For our current twenty-two twenty-three Q one and Q two enrollment data. This leaves us with an opportunity to examine the interconnectedness of non-credit. And how to leverage non-credit courses with other funding sources at the colleges. Next slide. Currently, the state CAPE office is working to implement a process to address excess carryover. In twenty eighteen nineteen, we developed internally a one-time additional funding process. To seed creative and innovative projects utilizing our excess carryover balances. And we did this in an equitable and transparent manner. To date, we have funded twenty-three projects. And of the twenty-three, ten were submitted by the colleges shown here on this slide. But of the twenty-three projects, we totaled over one million dollars. Next slide. So Anne will now talk about our active partnerships and our transition liaison's positions. And then we'll wrap it up and open it for questions.
Thank you very much, Shamila. Hello, everybody. So, next slide, please. The active partnerships that I'm going to highlight today are pathways to the college through our adult school and non-credit programming. And these pathways include co-location, co-enrollment, and curriculum alignment strategies. For example, Berkeley Adult School and Berkeley City College, they've created and sustained many pathways from the adult school and college and non-credit college programming. Next slide, please. Upward Scholars partners with our college members, providing student retention efforts at the critical points in those students' transitional paths. Next slide. Laney College has created a new vocational pathway through non-credit programming with the Lau Family Community Development Center. Next slide, please. And the East Bay Interagency Council. Is a collaborative mechanism that showcases the power of bringing together employers, academic programs. Industry-recognized certifications and the basic skills instruction to deliver qualified students all the way to Mary College. Here, you'll see the schematic of the triple enrollment model employed in this entry-level pathway into the tech field. Next slide, please. We're going to talk a little bit about the transitions team. So next slide again. On this slide, you'll see some of the members we're talking about. The project managers really help create some of those pathways that we bring into the college. And the transition liaison project managers help develop these pathways from our adult schools and our CBO partners. To foster a seamless transition into the Peralta Community College system. They do this through student engagement. It can be one-on-one with adult learners. It can be as classroom presentations. Or as workshops assisting with college matriculation and career exploration. Next slide, please. Here's a slide showcasing some of our adult education students. So as adults, they bring unique life and work experiences to the college and also when they enroll with us. Some adult ed students may have previous college work and they need to transfer credits. They need to remove holds, settle issues with financial aid. Work through name changes or just address residency challenges. Some are formerly incarcerated who ask for help navigating new technology. While others ask about basic skills courses that would help them catch up to where they would like to be. CAPE targets and supports these non-traditional adult students who often need a little extra support in exploring and successfully. Enrolling in any of the Peralta Colleges. And these transition liaison positions are critical to that process. And I'm going to pass it back to Shamila now to wrap up.
Next slide. So these are some needs that we have shared with the chancellor and the administration team that will help us systematically integrate adult ed with the colleges. For the sake of time, I won't go through each of them, but we are happy to expound on any of the needs listed here. In a future opportunity to meet individually or collectively again. Next slide. So we appreciate the time and the attention and the interest in the work of the collective. We were asked to keep it very high level. And brief, and so we tried to do that. But feel free to schedule time to meet with us again to discuss in more detail ways that we can improve our efforts. To seamlessly create that adult education system that our communities need from us and that they deserve. Each of you have received our three-year plan and it's also available on our website. So that you can see the work that we're doing through strategies and activities in both the adult schools and with the colleges. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Shamila.
Thank you so much.
And and also you, Anne. And just to kind of put this in context, because I know we have new board members and we also have seasoned members and. This all, this collaborative approach came about, if you recall. When the state started dismantling its adult ed, it used to be under the high schools. And it would be, if you wanted to go back and get your GED, you went to night school. That's what sort of was called, you know, high school, night school. And so the the high school starts saying, that really isn't our role, that really should belong to the community colleges. And it was bad at back and forth and back and forth. And the the state decided, well, it probably should be with community colleges. Our groups got together and said, hey, wait a minute, we don't mind doing it, but give us some money. You gave money to the high schools, you don't want to give us any money. And so they came up with this mixed consortium idea, which is what. Are what was being described to you today. It it is a combination of the K-12 with the community college to do all of the things that were identified in. The report that you just reviewed. So just to put it in a context, it's nothing new. It's just something that morphed. From the old, you know, night school in the high school. To something that's really much more collaborative and it also lends itself to all the things that we've been talking about in terms of career pathways. Guided pathways, dual enrollment, apprenticeships, work, study. It really pulls all of that together. And the two individuals, they're very. Not assuming or have grandeur about them, but they have done an outstanding role. In our district, there's one of those or some of those quiet workers just go about, do their business. Never really get recognized. So I want to thank you. I know what you're doing, so. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I know. Doing a good job. I want you to know that. So if there's no questions, we can go on to our consent items.
Trustee, we've got a really good question. So adult ed is what CDCP used to be, right? Or is CD or is adult ed the new CDCP or I'm. It's because I remember the CDCP conversation. I remember the adult ed conversation, but now as you were listing out the different things that adult ed does. Those were the same categories or classes that CDCP did or does.
So it didn't replace CDCP. Oh, go ahead.
So essentially. Once upon a time, non-credit, just the apportionment for it.
Right.
Was substantially less and CDCP was a way to bring non-credit up. That's a piece of this, but it's it's certainly not the whole thing.
And yet simultaneously, even though you have the same similar classes, there's an overlap of classes. You were saying that apportionment for adult ed is forty-four hundred, which is still higher than CDCP.
So actually, the forty-four hundred is the, it's actually forty-four thirteen is what we were got or were told by. The finance office here for the college non-credit apportionary.
Okay, okay. And and as I look at our numbers. COA, Berkeley College Laney, they're really high in terms of what they targeted and where you all are at. Hundred eighty-six, hundred forty-six percent, which is pretty fantastic. So what I'm hearing between the lines is I saw you two look at each other, then what we're trying. So what I'm hearing between the lines is I saw you two look at each other, then what we're trying to do. Is we're actually trying to increase the enrollment of adult ed at our Peralta colleges, because you look at. Berkeley adult ed and you look at Oakland adult ed and they have huge numbers. And it feels like we could do the same, is that what I'm hearing?
So it's a collective effort, right? So what we're.
We're not competing.
No, we're not competing, because we're actually in the consortium together, right? And so the idea is that we, the adult schools and the colleges work together to create these pathways. From adult ed into the colleges, right? And so not necessarily offering, um, duplicating programs. But creating programs so that it leads right into what the colleges offer. And working together to, you know, create like the full, I think the EBIATC was a good depiction of that, right? Um, so from a CBO, adult school, CBOs working together, um, employers working together to create that full circle program for an adult. To get into that livable wage job that we're trying to help them do.
That's so exciting. And thank you for just making that so much clearer in my mind. Thank you.
VP Quinlan?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I, I kind of think of adult ed as our fifth college. Um, and uh, you guys are doing a great job there. The one question I have is about. Uh, do we have data on what level of concurrent enrollment we're doing from adult ed?
That's a great question. I'll let Anne speak to it.
Yes, we do. Our office does track uh concurrent enrollment. It is not tracked at the college separately for adult schools. Uh, the, the adult school concurrent enrollment is not tracked, it's. Separately from the high school, uh, dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment.
So that's actually one of the needs that we have, VP Quinlan, on that needs list. Is, you know, working with IT to figure out um a specific code or a way to be able to specifically track adult ed concurrent enrollment. Separate from K twelve.
So you're, basically, it's just tracking our special admit students. And case people didn't know, uh, two years ago in California, uh, adult ed and became eligible for free tuition at our colleges. And those special admits along with our high school students that go to our community colleges. The FTS financial award for that is eighty-two hundred dollars for FTS. Which is uh, almost what, hundred fifty percent of our uh, our normal FTS allocation. So whatever improvements and encouragement we can make there, uh, will greatly help us grow these programs.
And one way that we tried to um really boost our concurrent enrollment. Was um, working with Oakland adult to be on Laney campus. So a lot of the adult ed students did not see themselves as college students, right? They were like, we just need to get our, you know, GED or diploma and get out of here and get a job. And so by placing them on the campus, um, having presentations, having tours, you know, really connecting with. Um, Laney staff to ingratiate them into the campus, they were able to start seeing themselves as a college student. And so you move them from concurrent enro, from adult ed, student only, into a concurrently enrolled student. And then they fully, you know, transfer into um the colleges. So, we really worked hard to like create the form and, you know, really separate it out from the K twelve process. Um, because they're, they're different from our K twelve students.
So the question I have, Dr. Jackson, is there a way we can talk to our um. Research department about getting a different indicator for high school concurrent enrollments and our, our adult ed concurrent enrollment so we can track them?
We can do that. I'm not sure what the indicate, the indicator may already be there. I just don't know. It may be that it's already there and embedded into our data source when it's coded. That's what I meant about the data integrity report, because we weren't coding correctly, so we weren't capturing that data. Um, and I would ask um, Dr. Stephanie Joker to take that back. And we'll get back to you on a answer for that, because we also have to check what IT. Uh, to see if it is being captured, if there's a data element already attached to those students. And if it isn't, then yes, we would have to make some changes to our uh data capturing system. And we have to add a data field to that record that would then be able to be tracked. To be able to give you that information, but it's doable. I just don't know if we're currently doing it. And I'm getting a, no, we aren't.
That's what they asked for.
So. So, okay, we'll look into that, definitely.
I asked, right?
We, we cap, we capture, I captured it down here, that we'll look into how we can capture that and work with Oracle or PeopleSoft. Um, and just a, a plug again. Remember we have another phase of our, it's the next phase of our um IT implementation. First one was moving to the cloud, second one was the HRM and the finance modules. And the third phase is the student journey. And this would fall under that next phase of the student journey of capturing that data. And adding that data element to the field, since it's not there, so that we can de-disaggregate it. And be able to actually track the success.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
President Delphine Polk, um, trust, student trustee Hogan has her hand.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Joker. Student trustee Hogan, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I had a um comment and a question. I um, wanted to know, was there a way to track or make sure that's. Students that are enrolled like in, like certificate programs. To make sure that they have their high school diploma. When they're enrolled into those programs, because I know a few people that have went to the certificate programs, they did not have their high school diploma. And it kind of held them up to where they had to go back and get that high school diploma before. They were able to uh move on to be able to transfer. So, is there a way to make sure that that is trackable within the system? So that students, when they first apply, they can have an opportunity to duly enroll and have concurrent enrollment. In the high school program. As well as that certificate program that they're already in.
Go ahead, VP Quinlan.
So, um, there, there is a program actually called Ability to Benefit. Where you do not have to be enrolled, you do not have to have a high school degree or a GED. Can enroll in CTE programs. And um, after completing a certain, uh, like in one case, it's six units of college credit. That you can take with concurrent enrollment, you can actually qualify for Pell Grants and other types of California grants and other types of funding. And I, I really believe that's our next frontier, that's the way, just uh, the, the data that came out of the report you guys did earlier. We have seventy-two thousand adult ed students that do not have high school degrees or, or uh. GEDs in our Peralta District. In the state of California, it's five million people that do not have high school degrees or GEDs. And uh, highest in the nation, eighteen percent, which is kind of astounding. For uh, the richest state that they so often brag is the sixth, sixth largest economy in the world. But eighteen percent of ours, population, uh, adults do not have high school diplomas or GEDs. And that's really an area where I think our community colleges can grow.
Did you want a chance to answer student trustee Hogan's question?
Thank you. So I would just say that. A while ago, I don't remember how many years at this point, but I um, worked with IR to run a report. To find out how many students in the district did not have the GED or diploma. And that was indicated on their CCC apply application. Um, and then we did like an outreach to those students to let them know. Adult school is an option for you to earn your GED or your diploma. Um, and so we didn't, at that point, I don't remember the reason. We weren't able to track um, at that point, but I think that's definitely something that we could look at and. You know, work on to continue doing um, and growing, because absolutely our adult schools. Welcome and want more students, you know, um, into the fold. So, I think to uh VP Quinlan's point, ability to benefit is great. And sometimes folks just want that piece of paper to say that they did it. And so, you know, um, it's a great opportunity for them to have that option to enroll in adult school as well.
Well, also, you know, when you go through all of that, you know, to get a certificate, that's sometimes that takes two years. And if you can't get that certificate after you've done all that work, because you don't have your high school diploma. And you really didn't even realize that you didn't have it. Some people really think that they have a high school diploma and they didn't really, you know, they're shy. Five units or two units. And it ha, I've seen it happen, so if there's a way to track that and to get those students. Cur concurrently enrolled, that would be a great, great tool. But, and thank you for the program too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Chancellor? Okay. Let's go ahead and move to consents.
For the chair. Did we pull five point three?
Um, I don't believe we did.
I have a question about five point three, so.
Okay, let's go ahead and you have to move it to a vote and then we can, or I'm sorry, motion and second to discussion.
Motion to pull.
Okay.
And I, I just want, as a point of clarification, just a, a quick. Um, pulling of the items under facilities to give the board a second update. Of where we are with our ninety-day projects. Um, so the items under seven point oh, under facilities. Also for um clarification. Pull them for just discussion.
Okay.
Quick discussion.
Do we wanna start with trustee with those items since it came first on the agenda?
Yeah, my question in uh, five point three, which covers um, board policies and administrative procedures. Has to do with um, administrative procedure seventy-three forty-one. Sabbatical leave for um, educational fin, academic administrators. Which um. Is not unique, I mean, a lot of the big companies do that on a regular basis. The armed forces do it. But one of the things that they have, all of them have, is a payback time. So that if somebody is gonna take a year off for their educational improvement. Uh, or investment in investigations or whatever the case may be. They ha, have a commitment of six years that they have to stay with the organization, so we don't get into a position of. Improving the skillsets of uh, certain employees and then having them leave and go to other colleges. Uh, that's number, that's number one. Number two. Administrators. They have a specific job. How do we? Fill that job? For a year and then have whoever was in that incumbent at the time back out. How does that work? It works with, with the professors, I see, see that, there's, you can adjust it, but. Just an awful lot of jobs that we've got in the administrative area don't have that kind of uh. Duplication or redundancy. I made myself clear.
Thank you, trustee Withrow.
And maybe, maybe um, another clarification on that is. Is this typical? I know that in our bo, board policy seventy-three forty talks about leaves in general. And then it has a list of different types or categories that could actually take those leaves as sabbatical, so faculty for sure, of course, right? Because we know faculty sabbatical, but then it does have academic administrators and one other category, can't remember. And so I guess the question um, that trustee Withrow is posing from the first reading too as well is. Is this typical? Because I haven't seen this. Um, uh, you, and you had searched, we haven't seen this at other. Uh, you colleges. And so, maybe, you know, obviously it's an AP, so this is yours, but it is on our BP. As a category. So, it's a big question mark for us, um, and it just seems like it would be difficult. Because exactly as trustee, trustee Withrow had said. If you have one particular administrator responsible for one thing, unlike faculty, which have many people that can do it, it's a bit different.
So I, I would recommend that we pull this particular item. Um, I have used this while in the district. Um, I had a vice president of student services. Um, that needed to finish his PhD. Um, and under this particular board item. The contract between that individual and me as the president of my college was that it was a two-for-one. For every month that you're off, or every day, however you wanna use it. Um, then the, there's two days that you owe the district, and that was part of the agreement, if not, then. You know, that, that was part of the agreement between him, me, and the district office that was signed off by the chancellor. It's not written that that's what happens, but that has been kind of the rule of thumb. If a academic administrator, and, and some of you may remember Alexis Montevergen. Um, that was the individual, that was the dean of counseling at College of Alameda who did that. And then there was another individual at another campus that did the same thing, an administrator, and they came back with the two-for-one. And so the district got its return on investment, so to speak, by allowing them to, to take the time off. And it also increased them in terms of their academic preparation. Because they got their PhD or their EDD and, and doctorate degrees, so it was a win-win for us. And it was also a win for the individual. We don't use it that often. Uh, most people can't afford to be without a pay. Um, because it is, you can use vacation, you can use all of that, but when that runs off, then you're on leave without pay. It isn't that they're getting paid during that time, which is different from faculty, uh, who do get paid during their sabbatical. But it really is kind of, uh, gives some flexibility at the college level to do it or not. And you do take into consideration, how are you gonna do the backfill of that? But because part of it is without pay, you do have that savings to be able to do that backfill, which is what you were speaking to.
Misinterpreted it, but when I looked at it, gave.
Is it the same one?
Is fully paid, and the next six months is uh, two-thirds and three-quarters paid.
Okay, then it's changed since I was here. That's why I said, I think we need to pull that one, Bill.
Okay, and that will come back to us at a future meeting, okay?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and pull that one, for review.
For review.
That won't be included in the consent calendar that we approved tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll do that. What, I, I would say that we should, we could pull the whole packet and then come back at a second review. Because I thought you had another item that you had a question about, Bill.
That was it.
Okay, well then we can just pull that particular item.
Okay, we'll pull that for a future meeting. That.
Just, just that policy.
Thank you.
Seventy-three forty-one.
Yes, and I believe there was a question about seven point two?
Yeah, you would take the item one at a time.
Okay. Okay. Let's go ahead and do that. Um, do, I'm sorry, do we have a question, Chancellor? I know you.
No, I, I just wanted to provide some information and then you could take the whole consent item. There, there isn't really anything um, other than to point out to the board the items. That the reason there's so many items there is because of the update that we provided to the board at the last meeting. There was a list of items district-wide that needed to be addressed. We've had some public comment on it. We've had meetings at the campuses on it. And those items from seven point one to, except seven point one, seven point two to seven point two zero. Are all relating to those small projects that we have to do across the district in terms of plumbing and electrical. Engineering work, roofing work, and, and all of that, uh, HVAC. So that's why you see so many of those contracts there, it's because of the ninety-day projects. All hands on deck, I think is how um, uh, Donald Moore referenced it at the last meeting. That I use that term, all hands on deck, that we wanted to get it done. So that's what you're looking at in those items. And also, it represents something that trustee Ewing had brought up in the past regarding small local business enterprises. And that's why you see so many of them is because we want to try to use as much as possible. Our small local businesses to do that work, rather than giving one big contract to an individual. But to kind of parse that out, and it gives us the flexibility to move across the campus simultaneously. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. And if there were any questions to um, IVC Smith. Um, then she could address those if you had any individual questions, but that's why I wanted to pull them out as a bulk item to explain. Why you see so much of them on the, on this particular consent agenda.
Uh, for the chair, given. Uh, for the chair, given that input, move approval for uh all of the consent items.
Except for five point three, correct? We pulled that.
Five point three.
We pulled it from consent. Natasha, did you want to jump in? Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so uh you're considering all of the consent calendar with the exception of five point three. We'll take that on a separate vote.
Right. Fantastic. Thank you. Any additional discussion on the consent calendar before we move to roll call?
Sorry, just maybe one more question. So um, thank you for that explanation. I think it's really important for us to underscore that these are, again, unforeseen. And also the vandalism that's been part and parcel that I don't know if the community, the district fully knows about. So you know, I just want to make sure that we're taking care of this because of, did you want to speak on that a bit more? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Reese. And uh, yes, it does um go to specially items seven point nineteen and seven point twenty. Um, to the vandalism recently, there's been more. Um, we found um more um isolation valves on a campus. The earthquake valves were activated. We haven't had an earthquake, but that shuts down the entire campus. So that gives you an idea of the things that we're combating. And we're working hard to um uh get ahead of. So this is great. Um, we are looking forward to moving forward on our ninety day projects. Um, and during those ninety days, we will also be doing additional assessments for some of the larger items that we have to address that have gone unaddressed for so many years. So we will be coming back with other items and an update on all of the activities that we've done.
We had an earthquake in session cloud this morning.
Well, this was discovered, you're, you're right. Three point two, but um this um was last week. So there was no earthquake last week.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and move to roll call. My apologies, who was the second?
VP Quinlan?
Oh, thank you. I did not hear. All right, student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Oh, he has left the meeting. Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes to approve all consent items with the exception of five point three. Wonderful. Yes, I'm also, I'm entertaining a motion for five point three. With without AP seventy-three forty-one. Thank you, VP Quinlan. Second from trustee Withrow. Any additional discussion before we move to roll call? Hearing none, let's move to roll call. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee can, uh, trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. With that, we can move to board of trustees' reports. I'll start to my left, trustee Johannes, do you have anything to report?
I do not have anything to report.
VP Quinlan?
Um, yes. So uh, last week I went to uh the Association of Professional Journalists or something like that. And one of our faculty was being given award for the Freedom of Information Act. Basically, it's a jam, James Madison Award, uh Free Speech Act, sorry. Uh, and it's called the James Madison Award because he was the primary author of the uh First Amendment, the Constitution around free speech. And what was striking there uh was, was not the fact that it was a, a Laney instructor so much, but um the number of people that had played significant roles on powerful issues, big issues in our community, exposing them. So the things that our students are being taught when they take those out into the community and out in the world are bringing forward all kinds of things that a lot of people would rather keep under the covers. Um, you know, uh huge amounts of fraud and uh things like the, in San Francisco, the, some of the hotels that were being used to house um and house, um, you know, just incredible uh uh level of, you know, just malfeasance and, and ripping people off and ripping the community off. And uh, it was very powerful to see where our students are, are heading and the role they're going to play in our future society and keeping everybody honest, basically.
Thank you, VP Quinlan. Trustee Reese?
Yep.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Not in the past, but uh this coming Thursday, there's a um, the Chamber of Commerce for Alameda is sponsoring a three-hour state of the city presentation for the mayor and staff. And um I'll be sitting at the College of Alameda table. And we're learning about career awareness and skillsets that um the business community is looking for right now.
Great, thank you. Um, I do have two things to report. So first one is this past weekend, I attended the twenty-third annual Oakland Unified Latino Honor Roll. Um, it was a fantastic day celebrating Latino, Latina students um with Oakland Unified, from across the Oakland Unified. And so I was there with uh school board director Valerie Baxter and Berkeley mayor Jesse Hadigain handing out medals to students who achieved, Latino students who achieved seven point, it's three point seven five or higher. And we honored over twelve hundred students. Um, it was a really just amazing, amazing ceremony. So, yes. Um, so I was very honored to be there. Uh, Merritt College and COA were tabling to um recruit students into our colleges, so I was really happy to see us represented so well. Um, and then the second thing, I'm, I'm going to be on a panel actually tomorrow um with the League of Women Voters Oakland, celebrating Women's History Month. And I'll be on a panel with the Oakland Chamber. Um, Barbara will be there, um as well as Mayor Tao. And so we're going to be talking about how we can all work together across sectors, um business, government, education, um and uplift um female identifying and women in our, in our city here in Oakland. So it's tomorrow at six, at one thou- six thirty, I apologize, at one thousand Broadway. Um, I do have the information pinned on my Twitter account, so feel free to come. It's free to everybody and should be a good time. I'm sorry?
Is it going to be broadcast still?
Um, I think it might be hybrid. It's the first League of Women Voters event that they've done since the pandemic. So I think that there will be a hybrid option. So um yeah, happy again to be representing the protocol colleges out there in the community. So um with that, I believe we are adjourned. I'm sorry, the announcements, I put away my no. Yeah, go for it.
And then after
Yes.
And then after the announcements, if um
Absolutely.
College of Alameda.
Oh, yes, of course.
Laney would like to make brief comments.
I apologize, of course, of course.
And then we can adjourn and.
Okay, fantastic.
And I won't be brief.
Oh, yes, yes. Let's go ahead and honor our folks first. Um, go ahead, Dr. Basrami.
Now, perfect. So you asked me to be brief, and usually I've been brief. But I don't know how to be brief for cousin Bob, so I might go a little bit longer here. So we were saddened to learn about be, our beloved COA CIS instructor Bob, or cousin Bob, as we called it, who formally retired last year and who passed away on March twenty-first. During his long career at Peralta and among many other notable professional achievements, cousin Bob served as president of the PFT. The press, academic senate president for COA. And most importantly, he was a great mentor to many faculty and classified professionals. Cousin Bob was above all a great educator and always available to students and always being innovative in his teaching and pedagogy practices. I had the privilege to work closely with him for several years as a COA faculty. As I looked through my email communication with cousin Bob upon learning about his passing, I found some great email exchanges. One goes back to two thousand eleven, when we're discussing about best practices of how to retain students in distant edu- education. He was a pioneer in distant education, and he was concerned about retention. And also talking about providing wraparound services for all students to succeed in online courses, especially students from underrepresented communities in higher education. Cousin Bob was a great colleague, an effective communicator, and he had a great sense of humor. Back in two thousand fourteen, when he became heel, he sent an open communication to COA community. And as Bob could only do, he shared with us that Saturday, I literally rolled out of bed onto the floor and I couldn't get up without help. I should have been more concerned about my health. But I couldn't get that old TV commercial. Help, I have fallen and I can't get up out of my mind, and I was actually laughing out loud. And he went on to share with us about his illness. And he got right back to work. He thanked us for all the emails and he said, finally, if anything fell through the cracks last week, I may need some help with the rema- help with a reminder of what I missed. Because I feel my brain was turned off during this time. And he sent much love to Alameda friends and family. And we so much will miss um cousin Bob and value his contribution. And I'll add another element that somebody texted me and said, Diana, he flew all the way to Utah with his wife to be present in my wedding. And this was a classified professional that he had mentored really closely. To see him becomes, you know, climb the next step and next step and the following step. Uh, will miss cousin Bob. Um, and um we are really saddened by his loss.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Basrami. Dr. Bessakov?
Thank you. The Laney College community is deeply saddened to have lost one of our longtime art faculty members, uh professor Leon Dockery, also on March twenty-first. He was passionate about both his work and his students as a teacher of sculpture and also of African-American art history and a sculptor himself, of course. He was also an innovator. When our Fab Lab came on campus, Professor Dockery immediately saw it as an opportunity for applications to present to his student artists. And in fact, if you were at the Laney campus um in the tower lobby back in two thousand eighteen, which is actually when I started, so I remember this. You might remember a sculpture of a giant horse-sized housefly that he made along with his sculpture students that sat in the tower lobby. That came from the tools and the resources and the instruction that came out of the Fab Lab. Professor Dockery had a long and distinguished teaching career, having held full-time teaching positions both at the University of Rochester and California College of the Arts. As well as part-time positions at USC, the San Francisco Art Institute, and Laney and Merritt College. Professor Dockery will be missed, and we honor the legacy he leaves in his art, his students, and all whom he touched with his life.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bessakov.
No, no other announcements, just um Vice President Quinlan's announcements. Thank you very much.
So tonight's announcements. Um, number one, best wishes to all students and faculty who are on spring break this week, March twenty-seventh to April second.
Happy spring break, everybody.
We hope everyone stays safe and comes back refreshed for the remainder of the spring semester. Two, the Merritt College campus will be closed on Wednesday and Thursday this week, March twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Administrators and classified prof- professionals should work from home. Three, the Peralta Community College District will be closed on Friday, March thirty-first, in observance of Caesar Chavez Day. We wish everyone a safe, long holiday weekend.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.